Good evening. Good evening, welcome to the board meeting that we are having here today, Monday, April 3rd. Thank you all for being here today. We had an anticipated executive session, it looks like we will have a second one following this meeting. We're now going to sit down.
I would like to introduce the President of the United States of America and the Republic of the United States, on your nation under God, in this law with the 13th and 14th amendment.
Thank you. We're all here, our student, especially a member, will probably be joining us shortly. The members of the board are here, and Mr. Southers will be joining us tomorrow. Today, we're going to start with the good of the quarter. If anyone has anything they'd like to share about the recent theatricals.
Yeah, I had a chance to see the high school play and the fifth grade play. And they were both amazing. It was quite far, no offense to my own children, when I was in the room, it was quite far the best fifth grade play I've ever seen. It was really good.
It was great.
That is one, I also enjoyed the high school play. I had childhood with a fifth grade play. Anything else?
There were three games, there was lacrosse, softball, and baseball. I know that baseball, softball, sorry, they won, I know that, against Albany Academy.
I heard lacrosse.
Lacrosse won. My daughter plays varsity, so I love varsity softball, so that's the only reason I know that they won, because I got the tax. It's like her.
So, spring sports are underway. With that, if there's nothing else, then we have an opportunity for students to be heard. I think that there are students here, if they have anything they'd like to say, invite them to come on up and say it, we will not bite. The takers of the student sort. Okay, and now we have an opportunity for the public to be heard. Any member of the public would like to come? Again, we do not bite, welcome you to come to the podium and be heard. Alright, anything else? No? Alright, we have a presentation now. On, from Madison Frisco?
Horisco.
Horisco, thank you. On the projections for enrollment, I believe. Thank you.
Is there anything we can give the slides?
Thank you, Dan.
Alright, good evening, everyone, my name is Madison Frisco, I'm the GIS and data analyst for CDRQC. I'm attempting to go to the next slide. The volume turned off?
Yeah, is her mic on?
The thing is flipped on.
And also her microphone might need to be a little longer.
Yeah.
That's the wrong one. There we go.
Ah, there we go. Is this better? Yes. Okay. Alright, for those of you who didn't hear me, my name is Madison Horisco, I'm the GIS and data analyst for CDRQC. If you're not familiar with CDRQC, we're the Capital District Regional Planning Commission. We're a resource center serving Schenectady, Saratoga, Rensler, and Albany County. And we focus primarily on data analysis, economic development, water quality, and some environmental science work. A quick outline for today, we'll be going over some demographic multipliers, the 20-year enrollment trends for your school district, some housing data, trends in birth rate, and the long-winded enrollment projections. Okay, so, a demographic multiplier is essentially looking at development in your communities and projecting and predicting how many students, school-age students, will be produced by this housing type. We rely on three different studies, two of which we've used previously, and one of which is new this year that we did in-house. So you can see the demographic multipliers on the right-hand side, they're broken out into different types of units, for example, single-family, two to four, five units. We also, CDRQC has a working relationship with your towns and municipalities, and we've received their new development and future development within the last, or plan within the next five years. Then we take that demographic multiplier, times it by the total number of units, and bam, we've got our school-age children produced by the different housing types. We aggregate them together, and you can see the totals there on the right-hand side. Best practice is just taking that middle range, so we have on the low end, 239 students, or school-age students produced by development in your communities, and on the high end, we have 293. Take the middle is the best practice. Okay, so, demographic multipliers do not, are not related to the enrollment projections that we do, that's just kind of contextual evidence for us as we're working through the analysis. The real meat of the analysis is called a survival multiplier, and it's, I'm going to break it down really simple, if you have 100 first graders in the 2020 to 2021 school year, and 120 second graders that next school year, so the same cohort, then the grade-to-grade survival ratio is 1.2. If we're seeing numbers above 1.2, that means your cohort is increasing, your enrollment is increasing, if we're seeing numbers below 1, that means it is decreasing. For kindergarten, it gets a little bit tricky, because we're relying on the birth data provided by the DOH, and that is lagged by a few years, and we have an example here, if there was 100 births in 2016, five years later, those kids are going to kindergarten in the 2021, 2022 school year, there was 120 kindergarten students, the kindergarten survival multipliers would be calculated the same way, 120 divided by 100, get to 1.2, cohort's increasing. That's the kind of the background. So this is your 20-year enrollment for your school district, we see a slight increase this year, and your total enrollment is 1,251 students. You can see a relatively flat or stable enrollment. Kindergarten enrollment throughout all the districts we provide this service to is always the most volatile, it's nothing to be concerned about, it's very usual. This year, we have 85 students in the kindergarten enrollment. Here is the 20-year K-5 enrollment, and we have the dotted line as your total enrollment with the values on the right-hand side, and the K-5 enrollment as the purple line with the values on the left-hand side. Same type of graph for your 6-8 enrollment. So we're seeing a slight increase there as well. 20-year 9-12 enrollment, slight decrease. Another piece of contextual data that we use is the census for our housing units. You can see the most recent census is from 2020, we have around 3,000, and then we take the ACS, which is a different form of the census, for this year, and we have 3,456 housing units, so we have an increase of about 1,000. We also get some contextual data from the Greater Capital Association of Realtors, and this just shows how much housing prices have increased in the recent years, and this year we're actually seeing a decrease in the number of units sold.
Due to inventory levels, or?
I'm not exactly sure what the cause is, and this date is also only through 2020 of November, so there is like a little bit of a monthly lag there. This is the birth data that I was talking about from the state department of health, we only have data up till 2020 right now, which is 52 births, so CDRQC, we take an average and the contextual data, and we predict the next two years of the birth data in order to complete the projections. Here is the birth-to-kindergarten survival ratio, as you can see from the time at which the number of birth data started to be collected, we have a increasing, or we have a survival ratio of above the 1, meaning there's been an increase over time. Alright, here, we're getting into the projections. You can see that 2022 to 2023, we have that 1,251 students, and by the end of our projection, the 2027 to 2028 school year, we have 1,334 students. You can see it's relatively stable, relatively flat over time with that slight increase. We did the same for the K-5 cohort, this year we have 595 students, and a slight decrease over time took 563. But again, relatively, relatively stable.
Madison?
Yes.
Does this take into account the Albany Country Club?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
That's in the elderly area.
Yeah, that's still, but also is all of our kids, all of our students who go there?
What?
All of our students are from that area.
Okay, yeah, so we did keep that into account.
But they won't be actually breaking ground until probably like 2028, 29?
Yeah.
So, now, we're not seeing a big boost from that, or?
Well, that's why we take a look at the demographic multiplier and see, because it takes into account how many units that, I guess, the development is producing. So it's an aggregate of all the neighboring communities, and then projecting out.
Thank you.
Here's a 6-8 enrollment projection, a slight increase. 9-12, a slight increase as well. And then here's the projection comparison over the last few years that we've done your projection, you can see the 2020, we projected slightly higher enrollment, in 2021, we projected slightly lower enrollment, and this year we've kind of hit it in that sweet spot of in-between. However, best practice again is to take the average of all these, to kind of hit that perfect spot of where your enrollment will be. And I think to better answer your question about the Albany Country Club, so we don't take into account any sort of housing information into this now, since this is solely derived on 20-year, however much data we have historically for your school district, but we use the contextual evidence from outside sources to predict the birth numbers that we get our projections.
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically telling us that, knowing when the housing numbers go up and say we have 200 more housing units coming in, we're going to see more of an increase?
Yes.
Using the multiplier?
Yes. And that's it? You have any questions? Feel free to ask them, or feel free to reach out to me or CDRQC.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madison. With that, we're going to move. To a budget presentation.
I'm sharing my screen, can you see it?
We don't have your head on the Promethean board at the moment, Jim. So, they're logging back into that, but we are getting up the screen so everyone else can see the presentation as well, so, but we should be good in a minute. Okay?
Okay, as noted on the title slide, this is a presentation of our final draft budget, expected for adoption.
We're having to pick the dates once again. We're supposed to say, I love it. Right, Jim?
Yeah, I can hear you. Let's see, one down.
It lasts.
Let's try that. Can you hear me? Okay, well, that's interesting.
Always something. Jim, I'm going to go to the next slide and start the conversation.
Okay.
So, I want to talk really quickly about some of the reasons of proposed budget, what went into the idea of what the proposed budget was, and what we were thinking about as we were making this budget. First and foremost, you know, the idea was continue to keep sustainable opportunities for our students, so all the work that we've been able to continue to grow over the past few years is continued at growth, so our facilities, as Tricia was showing before, we were talking about what we've done to be able to make a Title IX compliant, be able to fix a lot of our different facilities such as our tennis courts, be able, you know, improve our softball fields, our baseball fields, continuing facilities work of a $100,000 project each year within our facilities. So those are things that we're still continuing to do, while adding staff members, over the past four years, we've added 10 FTEs to the district, and I know there was the cuts prior to the arrival, like I'm going to say before me, because that was prior to four years ago, so we've additional 10 FTEs over that four-year period, still adding in more FTEs as we go along. The number one thing that we kind of talk about is, you know, this year we've seen a large increase of our foundation aid money. Jim, you can chime in when you hear that one, but we've got a large increase of our foundation aid money, that's not going to be around forever, and if our tax debt was 4.5, this was an opportunity for us to look at our taxpayers and the burden on them. You know, we pay for, our taxpayer is 72% of our basis, so unlike other school districts, we're not seeing federal government or state be able to pay for a majority of our school, we're on the opposite end, so 72% of our funds completely from our taxpayers, this was an opportunity for us to look at it and understand where we are. In the future, most likely, we'll be at the cap from this point forward, because we're knowing we're not going to have that foundation aid in slots to be able to continue to grow that we know we're going to get. So, but this is an opportunity to look at this, and really understand where we are, and do that. Jim, how much did we get with foundation aid this year?
It was right around 4.9 million, and it's projected to be 6.1 next year.
Okay, so, we saw a large increase from our foundation aid, that hopefully will continue over the next few years? I'm going to knock on wood, there's been a lot of conversations that, you know, there might be recession, or there might be changes, but we've finally been fully funded in foundation aid. Far as I know, they're going to continue that fully funding. Some of my colleagues in other school districts were overfunded, and they might have safe harmless, so they're going to be seeing some hard times come their way if the foundation aid formula does change. It is going to have negative impacts in those districts. You know, we're probably looking in the future years, probably 3% over each year, 5%, but we're not looking at large impacts or increases from this point forward. This is the one year that we're going to have that. So, one of the things that we also look at is our slow growth, is how can we plan for the future and continue to grow and move forward? One of the things I'm going to talk about later is, we're adding, our business teacher, we're adding a .2 to that position, so that person can actually take over sixth grade. I know that doesn't sound very like, ooh, that's great, but here's the neat thing that happens, that person's an OCC certified person, so now in sixth grade, it changes the Part 100 regulations and the credits, so in sixth and seventh grade, they can earn their OCC credits, occupational credits, and then in eighth grade, two years down the road, we know that we can add another staff member for electives, right? So this will give another option to build in our programs. So, making these changes down the road can have better impact for our students. It takes a little bit of time to be able to grow those, because right now, if we were to add those electives, we wouldn't have the students to take it, because they still need those occupational credits. So, that's why making sure that we do that is important, so moving the sixth grade teacher is there. A fiscally sound budget, Jim, do you want to take that one?
Yep, so, fiscally sound budget is where the total revenues in estimated equal the total expenses out, so, as I think we've discussed previously, a normal year, you spend about 97.5 of your expense budget. We said it that way so that we don't go over the hard cap, which is 100%. Allocated fund balance is the buffer if it is a tougher year and we have to eat up some of that. In a really good year, as we've had, as we had last year, it might be 95%, but we always try to stick in a very narrow band, and we usually do, because a lot of our costs are fixed, so.
Any questions so far? Alright. I'm calling because I have gym notes when I change. So. So, list of budget vote dates, these are all the expected kind of calendar dates we're moving towards, tonight is the adoption of the budget for property tax support card by the board, so there's not any changes or conversation, but this will be the change for the property tax tonight, and then you can see that we have the deadline for board education petitions, we do have two open seats, and the FTT ballot are made available, and the vote is May 16th, and the VTA is also having a barbecue on that same day, so, shame was plucked for them, but they are having a barbecue on the same day as the budget. Jim?
Sorry, the next slide? Yeah. Having a little trouble here, apparently. So, we are maintaining the funds that we put in this current year for needed maintenance projects at all buildings to try to get rid of that backlog of deferred maintenance that we've talked about. $325,000, including camera system upgrades and cabling through the BOSIS and RIC, pavement repairs, roof repairs, and other deferred maintenance items. Keeping the $100,000 capital outlay project tentatively focused on the elementary school, we've kind of laid out what we think we're going to do over the next couple of years, so we don't get into the situation where we're only getting approval way too late to actually get the work done.
Jim, I'm going to kind of talk a little bit about the repairs, so the camera system and those options are also safety initiatives, right? So we're moving forward on those, but in order for us to be able to upgrade some of these safety initiatives, we do have something that I like to call, and probably Lonnie can say this, the spaghetti network. Our facilities itself, with the network cabling and all the infrastructure, is pretty outdated, and it's kind of a mess, so, over the past couple of years, we've been putting more and more funds into increasing our network, increasing all the different aspects of it. The next thing for us is going to have to be, and will be, the networking, the cables itself, so rerunning our network cables and doing that, will finally get the district to the infrastructure it needs to be, so then down the road, we can be able to support more initiatives. For example, our phones, right? We're currently using our old analog phones, we're not voice-over IP, most likely by the time that we get to the networking cable, we can switch right to a cloud-based phone system, and kind of skip over that technology to have the district prepared for the next step. So, a lot of these things are just kind of taking care of that deferred maintenance that's been going on for some time, and really just chipping away to make sure that we can continue the growth for the years, because we're not making budgets only for next year and the year to follow, we're making budgets to make sure that five, 10, 15 years from now, the district is still making good progress. Glad, Jim?
Yep, the next area that we're continuing from the current year is the new reading program at the elementary school. The actual cost of such a program is at least $150,000, so $80,000 from this year, $80,000 from next, and we'll be able to fund it over those two years, and the professional development for the program to make it effective for all levels.
Jim, I know there was a question that has been raised by a committee member to me about, you know, have we purchased a reading program yet? No, we have not, we're currently still using a district-provided and teacher-developed programs that have been in the district for the past 19 years, and we're still looking and doing that, even though we've allocated the funds, we have not spent them at this point in time, and hopefully will spend them by the end of the budget season.
So, details on the next slide for this next area, staffing increases to note areas of concern, growth in the district, safety, social, emotional learning, et cetera. The final piece of this is increased equipment expenditures for our one-to-one program, we have devices that are aging out, approximately 600 in a couple of years, so we're doing 300 a year over the next couple of years, 600 two years later, so we do basically keep it up 300 a year, and we'll be able to maintain our program with devices that will actually work the entire time.
And these are narrative purchases that are expense-based aids, correct?
Yes.
So, an expense-based aid, again, is something that we get revenue on, so you spend this year, and the following year you get revenue, so not only are we purchasing equipment, we're actually planning with revenue in the future.
Special education, there are often times where you need IEP-required equipment and furniture, and changes in athletics to maintain and improve our progress. Staffing changes. Additional special education teacher based on our needs for the elementary school?
So, additional special education teacher at the elementary school, we have seen an increase of our students, that will also help change the way that the program is delivered at the elementary school to be able to have targeted interventions for our students. Support for the safety initiatives of both districts, so elementary dean of students, so slash guidance counselor, so we're looking to get a guidance-certified person to be able to be a teacher on alternative assignment to work with the district, this will also go hand-in-hand, I'm sorry, I have my back here, I feel very odd about that, this will also go hand-in-hand with the grant that we recently see from the Office of Mental Health, we received a grant for Second Step, so congratulations to the district for that. That will be able to then have that social-emotional program be able to be rolling out, along with the K-8, that's a K program, and there's a bullying prevention unit as well. If you've seen Jeff Vedenzio, our elementary school principal, he is actually doing the direction of traffic in the morning and in the afternoon, instead of doing the leadership things that he could be doing during the day, a dean of students will be able to help him, be able to do the organizational management of the building, so then he can focus on the instructional leadership. Then we're looking at assistant principal and equity coordinator in the middle school, high school, so we have 350 students in our middle school, 350 students in our high school, a dean of students who's also our athletic director, and two principals. There really needs to be more support to be able to handling our referral system, our behavioral systems, and also then our social-emotional support, so looking at more restorative justice practices being able to be brought into the district. We don't have the staffing right now to be able to work on some of those things, so this is a way for us to be able to continue to build those staffing and programs. So this is a way for us to be able to continue to build those staffing and programs. Um the high impact tutoring aid, Jim, I'll let you take that one. Oh, actually, I'll take, because I just learned something new. So the budget is not done yet for the state. There is a good chance that this might be going away. They're not really sure. Um I know that some places really like it, some people really don't like it, and they're still having a discussion about what this will be. Um the money still may be there, but it might not be earmarked the same way it is. So we may have a little bit more flexibility with that money. So then we can add that to our programs and be able to develop as we planned in the first place. Um but we don't know yet what's going to happen. So we're airing on the safe side, so keeping it allocated. Tim.
When you say go away, you mean as a set aside, but we'd still get the money?
Yes, that is correct. So right now it's a set aside and they're telling us what we have to do with those funds. Um we're we're knowing we're putting it into the general fund at this point in time and if we have to allocate it, we can. Um but right now we're thinking that it might just not be the same kind of structure that it was in the first place. And we won't know that until the budget is passed. And I don't believe unless there's any real major changes over the next three days, we're going to see a budget until probably next week. Um we have Passover and Easter, so it's looking like this is gonna be a little bit of a later budget for the state. And as I talked about earlier, the middle school business position to point to FTE and reduce TA portion for FTE. So we're gonna have to fill that. So that person is a certified teacher and a teacher assistant. As we're taking with a teacher assistant position, we do have to fill the teacher assistant position. So that will have to happen. Um and then we're still continually adding our six classes too. So that way, uh when we have extra classes or courses that can be offered or we need extra staffing, we offer six courses, which is at a contractual rate for the teacher for the year. So we continue to build program that.
The next slide, it's not very useful because it talks about the high impact tutoring that we think may be going away, so.
I'm getting, I'm moving from that slide, Jim.
Yep.
So before Jim gets into the passenger buses, I just kind of wanna talk about this. Um there was a comment made to me by a community member that we have money to buy electric school buses. I just wanna flat out say we are not buying electric school buses. We don't have the funds currently to buy electric school buses, Jim. An electric school bus is how much right now, someone?
Uh roughly four hundred thousand dollars.
And the one grant that is out there, we currently won't qualify for because we have to be in a low needs impact or point five miles away from a low needs impact. So our district wouldn't qualify the grant to be able to pay off the diesel, so we are not very. Um and we're not, we don't have the infrastructure yet to do it. So we're not moving to electric buses yet. I'm going to talk about that a little bit later, but I kind of just wanted to say that in the budget. We're talking about gas buses, we're moving away from diesel. So go ahead, Jim.
Correct, so that was what I was gonna note, that we have moved to gas because of the requirements and problems of diesel. Uh we are looking at one sixty-five passenger bus and one seventy-two passenger bus, and that's under state contract for three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. A smaller van-based school bus, you know, the thirty position one, for ninety-four thousand. Those have increased significantly over the past year. Um so four hundred and twenty-two thousand is the total cost. That's aided at our transportation aid ratio of sixty-four percent over five years. We bond out for that, so.
So I'm gonna say this again, just in case there's new people into the budget. This is an expense-based aid, we do this yearly. So we purchase buses this year to know that we're gonna give revenue next year to be able to offset the cost for purchasing the buses. If you don't purchase buses next year, we won't have that extra revenue to be able to buy the buses the following year. So it ends up increasing the cost of the district. So rolling over this expense-based aid year after year after year is is actually just really good planning. And a lot of districts do this because it's utilizing that expense-based aid structure that's currently out there. Jim, this is all you.
So the tax cap, we start with our current tax levy for the current year of nineteen seven four eight three oh one. We apply our growth factor of two point zero eight percent, which is one of the larger factors in the state. That uh that's properties that have been expanded or new properties that have been added. We subtract our capital levy exclusion from the current year and apply the maximum two percent, even though CPI was eight percent, because they cap us at two, to get to twenty million four hundred and seventy-five zero zero two. That's an increase that's allowed under the basic idea of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars or three point six eight percent. We have a capital levy exclusion, so that's basically a difference between what our buses cost and what we uh what our bonding payment is, also for building aid, also for BOSI's aid. That comes out to a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, giving us a total tax levy limit of twenty million six hundred thousand dollars. Our current draft includes only an increase of two point five percent to twenty million two hundred and forty-two thousand zero zero nine. And it's projected, because that growth factor was so high, two point zero eight percent, that the tax rate increase would be under one percent due to that value growth. We're at sixteen point three two, I wanna say, so less than one percent. You're talking sixteen cents on true thousand dollar value, so. We have to stick to the executive budget proposal because we don't have anything else to work with at this point. So the total state aid projected is eight point six million. Our tax cap maximum is twenty point six million. Our actual estimated tax levy under this budget is twenty point two million. Other revenues are about four hundred and seventy. That includes some slight increases to interest because of all the interest increases that have gone on. We allocate the two and a half percent fund balance to balance things out. Total of thirty million seventy-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars. Future aid estimates, we know that we don't know what they're going to be. So we can't assume anything when we're going forward. Current year going to twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, any district that was at their full foundation aid got only a three percent hold harmless estimate. If things go bad in the economy, that can become zero instantly. Or it could become a negative if they're overfunded, we don't know. So that's why we really can't plan too far ahead on these things. Uh we're committed to only levying the required property taxes to meet the requirements of our students and our community. Summary of our proposed budget. Projected expenses of thirty million, projected revenues of thirty million. Projected revenue assumes the below tax cap increase of a little under five hundred thousand dollars. Significantly increased state aid, mostly the foundation aid due amount. That brings us to full foundation aid and our allocated fund balance. Projected budget gap of zero, as it has been. And that's pretty much it, so questions?
Tim. Going back to that reading program. We allocated eighty thousand dollars this year plus twenty-five thousand dollars for staff development.
Yep.
Program.
Correct.
And now we have eighty thousand dollars we put in the coming year budget plus twenty-five thousand dollars.
We may still buy a program by the end of the year?
Okay.
So that money's still budgeted for this year?
And we would probably use the eighty thousand and then move the twenty-five thousand in to cover a hundred and five thousand of whatever that expense is in the current year.
But I guess my question, you had said earlier, you thought the purchase of such a program would be close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We thought we were buying it for eighty thousand dollars.
No, we knew that it was gonna be spread out over two years. Will we get it?
Yes.
Okay.
Two years minimum, yes.
Uh okay, got it.
Because there might, we might have been looking at a program that's four hundred thousand dollars. So that would mean that we could come back and say, we have to have a conversation as a board. So it really is dependent, but first we said two years, just to be able to level it out. Um and that was an estimate because some programs are less, but we're not sure if those were programs that we would be looking at. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Of your presentation? Thank you, Jim, for being here and letting you greetings. Good luck.
Thanks, Jim. Um Jim is going to turn off his camera, um but he still will be listening. So if there's a, anything that comes up that we need to have a conversation on, we can get ahold of Jim to have further conversation.
Now, we have a report from Talia.
Yeah, of course, yeah, sorry, I will wait after. Um so the High School Musical Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat was held March seventeenth to the nineteenth. And friends and family, community members and teachers all came out to support the production, which included sixteen middle school students who participated as the children's choir and stage group. We also had the um fifth grade play this weekend, which. Um and then on March. Science fair was held with a record number of participants, at nearly two hundred students. On March twenty-fourth, the National Honor Society hosted a movie night for U S students. Over two hundred students and their families attended the event to watch TV and over three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Twenty-seventh, uh the district celebrated College Day. Teachers throughout the district discussed their college experiences and several high school seniors visited fourth and fifth grade classrooms to talk about. Any questions? And my last thing is congratulations to Elizabeth Spencer and Hudson Rose for having artwork selected to be displayed in the High School Visual Art Show. This year, twenty-eight districts submitted five hundred and seventy-three works and a total of a hundred and one works were accepted. Their work will be displayed at the Albany Center Gallery from now until April twenty-second. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, a lot of, a lot of points on that are wonderful. Thank you for sharing them. Um now Frank is going to fire us with his current minutes report.
Okay. So um it is now three through eight testing. I've had some questions. And I wanted to answer them and kind of give an overview. The building principals all sent out letters to families. Those letters are based off of New York State Education Department information that's been provided. And I actually did give you the links here, um that if anybody wanna look at it. And it's also on our board agenda, so you can see these links. So things you need to know, this year we have a three through eight testing. It is English Language Arts, which is called ELA. So I know we always talk about acronyms and everybody gets confused, so actually tried to do a little bit better with this presentation to help out with that. And then we have our math, it's just math, there's no special words for that. And then science is only grade eight this year. Um I can explain that in a little bit. So when are they and how will they be administered? So ELA, that's English, is April nineteenth to the twentieth for elementary and middle school, grades three through eight. Paper-based assessments will be grades three, four and five, oh, three, four and five will be uh computer-based testing. Middle school is only computer-based testing, which is CBT. So you'll hear that over and over again, CBT, computer-based testing. Math is made third to the fourth. Elementary is only paper-based and middle school is CBT. This year, grade eight only science is science eight performance assessment and activity is the twenty-third to the twenty-fourth. And then the written assessment is June fifth. How are the assessments different this year? Well, grade three through eight math and ELA are all based on the next gen standards. Um as you know, we've been talking about it, the district for over the past few years has been shifting and doing a lot of work. Um it puts curriculum into moving over to next gen from Common Core. Um and that work started with a prioritization of the standard work and then using essential ed to be able to create the maps and then utilize our maps and create first round drafts of maps to be able to look at our next gen standards. That's why this three through eight testing is gonna be important because this is the first assessment of those things, the generation standards coming back. So we can use that data, and I'll talk about it in a little bit, to really assess our curriculum maps. So this is, we've been working on the standard work, we've been seeing how we're doing it, and now we can use that assessment as kind of a benchmark to see where we're going. Um ELA now has both multiple choice and constructive response on both days. Third grade will only have a short answer question and for the constructive response, not an essay question. Math has a one-point question that's been added to the test that doesn't require students to show their work. The one point has been added to the rubric for scoring as well. Science, they removed fourth grade science assessment next year. They will have it in fifth grade. So we've done a lot of work this year and it's been through K through five. And science curriculum work has changed, so kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade and fifth grade, they do teach science. Um and the teachers, they change off their maps from what they do. It's basically every other day or every other three days where they put these programs in or they have larger projects throughout the timeframe that be is able to support it. All science assessments next year change to the New York State P twelve learning standards in twenty-three, twenty-four. So we're in the transition year this year. All right, how are test scores utilized? So as I said already, there are tools, by the way, all of this information came right off a website. It's not something that I've made up, only a little bit. Uh the United States Department of Education has uncoupled the state assessments to teacher accountability. In the past, when they first came out, they were directly linked, they are no longer real. Um but the results are utilized to evaluate our curriculum. The results provide teachers with specific data, stakeholders identify student populations, and the state uses performance data of all students to the state to measure student learning. That goes to our report card, so I can talk about that in a little bit. But even though it's uncoupled from the teacher rubric, it still is a district and building-level report card. So those state assessments that come out every year and they're like, oh, you have the report cards and they're posted in the newspapers and all of those different things, it's based off of these assessments and regions assessments.
When do the assessment results come back?
Typically in the summer. Um I'm gonna guess this year, since it's a new test, I'm gonna guess probably August, maybe September. Um just being a pessimist and an optimist. Um but you know, August, and then we try to do a lot of work typically in August and September, giving time for them to review their data. All right. Now, you gotta bear with me because I'm just gonna read this through and then I can answer questions from the board. Is it mandatory? So ESS requires that every state assess all students in grades three through eight or reading and math each year. States must assess all students at least once in high school. New York State does not have any law regarding parental's right to choose whether their children participate in state testing. By the way, took a read off on the links that I gave everybody. But federal requirements include ninety-five percent of students in each public school, including charred schools, are required to participate merely in assessments. So we're supposed to have every year ninety-five percent of our students in. This applies to all subgroups as well. It includes more racial ethnic groups, English language learners, low-income students, students with disabilities. Those subgroups, those are called, are what we get assessed by. So not only are we assessed by all of grade three, all of grade four, all of grade five, we're assessed by each subgroup as well. So the state report card will have, how did our students do with economically disadvantaged students? How did our Hispanic students do? How did our, so it goes through those levels and we are compared throughout the state now. And I'm gonna talk about how that assessment is utilized. All right, how participation might be factored into how students' achievements result or reported for my school? Again, parents can choose to have their students not sit, um but I wanna talk about what the ESSA data is. At the elementary and middle school level, school-wide achievement in English, math and science measured in two ways. It's required by ESSA by adjusting the report performance of the subject when fewer than ninety-five percent are tested. So that's a weighted average that actually goes into our subgroup work. Karen Conroy, when she gives her presentation on this, she'll probably go into great detail about what this is. Um I'm giving you a very brief overview, it's very complex. And based only on results where students are participating in state assessments, and that's core subject index, schools are then compared to previous year's index as well as measures of interim progress, long-term goals, and an end goal to determine how much progress a student made each year. So. This is one that you can read, it gets a little crazy. But participation or lack of participation on the progress report could in turn affect the school's accountability status. So in those subgroup levels, when you have a lower amount of students participating, that could impact the smaller subgroup level. So the ones like social economic level, special education students, where we have small numbers. If we have a large student population that doesn't take that test, that could have, and again, it's very ambiguous, I'm saying could. It could have negative impact on those performance numbers in comparison to other districts. So just wanna be clear on what that is. So again, this one's gonna get a little heavy and I need to apologize, but I kinda wanna go over this. As you know, uh Karen each year is our Director of Curriculum Instruction, she will do a report for you. Um this is one of our report cards, you can see there. So three through eight testing is one data point that's utilized to measure schools in the districts. Attendance, region scores, primary absenteeism, graduation rates, they use a lot of different. They use a lot of different things to be able to give the school their report card. Um, but these are some of the major factors. The big thing is subgroups. All subgroups are, are included. So all students is a subgroup. Race, economics status, special education services. So let's say we're fours, and I'll explain what a four is across the board. We're fours for all students. But our subgroup for special education students is a one or a two over a period of years. Then we could be a school and they change the name of it, so I gotta apologize. But basically a school needs improvement, but they don't call it that anymore. But then we could go on a list and then we have to do different things to be able to improve that. So even though we have all of our students well, if not a whole part, all of our population is doing well, then we have to do an improvement plan and we will no longer be in good standing. Currently, we are in good standing. Um, another thing that's kind of important to notice is that each group on each assessment, K twelve, this may be what the district said that. The data is also used to work schools such as recognition schools and used to calculate other awards such as blue ribbon recognition. I've had people say, well, why aren't we getting blue ribbon school every year? It's every fifteen years for a blue ribbon school. So if you get it once, you're not eligible to get it again for another fifteen years. Um, that's not commonplace. Not everybody understands that, but it's a fifteen-year rotation. Participation rate, though, is included and can be part of that component as well. Um, school data is compared to all students in the state, not to how they perform in general. So that's important. That's a change from the previous years. It used to be, all right, how are students performed? Okay, they got a two. Well, they performed, they got a three. It is different now. Now. It is a level one is we care ten percent or less than the rest of everybody. The same rates, the higher are, the better it is. Ten point one to fifty percent, fifty percent to seventy-five percent, and then level four is we're doing greater than seventy-five percent of the population viewing. So they changed that data. They take our students and our subgroups and they compare that to all students in New York State. That's a difference, and Karen can go over that again, but that is not the way that they used to do accountability. And I tried to make that as painless as humanly possible, but I did want to talk about it since we are in three-through-eight. I know, Tim, you asked me some of those questions. Goodbye.
Can I ask you that last thing we were talking about there, the level one, two, three, four?
Yes.
How do you achieve, what, what does this mean? For example, last year for ELA in the school district, not building, all student subgroups of four.
Yes, that means we.
Greater than seventy-five percent. What does that mean?
It means that we, our students performed greater than seventy-five percent of all other students in New York State.
Okay.
Right, so it's all students.
Percentile.
Yep. So as the state says, the higher up the number goes, the higher performing your students are. The majority of our students were fours and threes. We did have some twos, um, when chronic absenteeism as well. But we're working through those as programs. Anything else on this? Trish, did you have a question or someone else?
Frank, have we met the ninety-five percent participation?
No.
No. Is there a waiver process or?
There is no waiver process in this. Go ahead, Rachel.
Uh, have we met panel?
Not yet.
Or, yeah. Thanks.
I kind of had someone questioning, um. The good standing thing is that basically no deep breath?
No, no.
If anything ever happens to.
Yeah, so schools get identified each year.
Identified.
Yep, and then you have to put corrective action plans in place.
Which we would anyways.
Yep, and then those.
If we do have people that weren't doing well.
Correct.
Regardless of this test, right?
Yep.
Um, and you had mentioned this will be the first testing with the next-gen standards.
Correct.
And it will be able to assess how our math would work, but certainly we must be assessing that outside of these exams.
I would imagine so, but I don't want to speak for the staff because I don't believe there's common benchmark assessments, grades K through five or six through eight. So I don't want to state that there's been that.
But we're never lying on this one.
No, this is one component. Okay, correct. As we stated multiple times in multiple ways, state assessments are a snapshot of where our students are, but it is a tool that we can utilize to be able to.
Right, I just want to make sure it's clear because it sounded like we were gonna lie on this test and tell us that.
No, I'm sorry. I think you got that understanding. We use this task to be able to look at the standard where our students perform. So if we have a hundred of our students taking the exam and a hundred of our students didn't perform on a specific standard, we could go back and look at their report, you know, and look at the curriculum and say, where did we teach that? Did we miss something? Did we not miss something? So that's a benchmark assessment that they can utilize to do that. As they create more benchmark assessments for each grade level for math and ELA, they can also be utilizing that as well.
Good. I just want to make sure our approach wasn't changing.
Nope, hasn't happened.
And, and then just lastly, the letters that went to families, I didn't get to see because I don't have a child that young anymore. But did it explain, uh, to families how they could opt out if they wanted to?
We are not, that's not something that I would condone to say you're to opt out because we're supposed to not include or, as an official, I'm not supposed to tell families they should be opting out.
It did not say you should.
It didn't say you shouldn't. It didn't say you should. It just gave you the information that's out there. We already have received, um, the information went out two o'clock. We got knocked out at two o'clock. So, you know, the people who are not gonna take it, it's not, that's a refusal. Um, they're choosing not to take it. Yes, yep, but the state's mind, it's not opting out, it is a refusal. Um, so that's kind of where it goes. June. Yes. Oh, go ahead, Tim.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, Tim.
This year, grade eight are gonna have a science exam.
Correct.
Um, and only grade eight.
Correct.
In the future, uh, it looks like there's gonna be science. It's been removed for the fourth grade, but next year the science test moved to fifth grade.
Fifth grade.
Explain that a little for me, so.
You know what, um, it's the state and the way that you're doing it. That's something that Karen Conroy can explain a little bit more. Okay. I don't have a firm grasp of the curriculum, so I don't want to be able to say something that I don't, I get.
I'm just gonna ask, if students opt to refuse or their parents or guardians up or choose to not take the test, the word being refused, they just need to send in an email?
Yes, yep, and there's also websites on the, that they can Google to be able to understand and do that correctly.
And then those students during the time of testing would be doing what precisely?
So I'm not the building principal, so I don't know specifics of what's happening?
My understanding is sometimes they can sit quietly and read. Sometimes there's an alternative room if there's enough, not enough students, but if, if there's a body of students that's.
Yeah, it's uncovered.
Okay, thank you. I understand the situation, but the testing dates are already set for April eighteenth and nineteenth and.
I have the names right here.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you for explaining all that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for, you're welcome.
Thanks for asking a question.
Okay. All right, so I keep myself on track on this one and not go off on a tangent. I've actually written down what I wanted to say tonight. Um. You know, as you know, there were the tragic events that occurred in Nashville. Uh, the senseless violence is. I don't know when it's gonna end, and it's just getting to the point where it's frustrating. And not only that, and first and foremost, my heart goes up to those families and that, those communities and the sorrows that they're feeling. Um, to add to that stress that goes on with this, then we had the national swatting incidents. So then you create this fear and panic and anxiety on a large scale and act just over top of what's already been happening to our families and communities. Then the safety of our schools goes beyond that. So we have this physical threat, now we have this threat of swatting coming in, and then we have the cyber threat. Right? So then you have the cyber threat where people are hacking in, doing things, getting data information, holding schools ransom, and then taking student personal information, creating credit accounts on students. And then using that information to rack up credit card debt even before the child is twelve. So if we talk and look at the state of society right now, that's a hard pill to swallow. And it, it gets very difficult for me as an educator and as a parent, um, you know, to understand the fearful events that are occurring in our world. So, you know, as I wrote, as a father of four and a guardian of thousands, these things are constantly on my mind. But we can't let that fear control us and we can't let that fear stop what we're trying to do. But we have to make sure that we're addressing those things clearly. And again, I'm trying to read it because this is something that really bothers me, so, um, so bear with me, I apologize. The first thing is to not let our guard down. It's recently, the New York State troopers put out a letter to the families and everyone in New York State. Um, and they said, as state troopers said, it is important for school administrators and leadership teams to always be prepared for any possible incident. But in this time of heightened anxiety related to school safety, it is also particularly important to facilitate a safe and calm culture of preparedness as well as clear communication between law enforcement and school officials. We can't let this fear change the dynamic culture of a district. When that happens, our students are the ones that are going to have the negative consequences. We, as a district, continually evaluate our building safety plans and work to better develop the processes and practices. Um, there's a lot that we do. As you know, the sheriffs come in, we constantly look at issues. We're currently evaluating our unification drills, um, and our drills and practices and our communication to our community by exploring I Love You Guys. If you've never seen or heard of I Love You Guys, uh, if I show hands forward, have you ever heard of it? Or, so I Love You Guys is a nonprofit organization. Um, they basically have the cream of the crop information that goes out to communities. Unfortunately, the reason why they have that is because the mother and father who started this nonprofit organization lost their child in a school shooting. Um, there was an incident. I watched the video and you can find this. I'm just gonna explain it very quickly. Um, the child, someone went into the school district, bombarded themselves or barricaded themselves into the organization and took hostage some students. Some students were let go, some students were not. Their child, unfortunately, was not, the last text message they received was I love you guys. So that is why they've done that. All of their information is free online. It is amazing resources. Um, and it is something that the district now is looking at to be able to better prepare our students and community. It also helps normalize some of the language that goes on as well, so it takes away some of that fear. Because right now we do all these fear things, right, and all these things that create anxiety, and we're gonna try taking some of that away. So using this I Love You Guys work really will help focus the district a little bit stronger than we're going to. Um, I can't think law enforcement, not the sheriff and troopers, are in constant communication and support with the district. Um, recently, we've been able to link our building access codes directly to the sheriff's office, so they all get arts for their access into their buildings. Um, Ravina, I believe, has been able to do this as well. So now every sheriff in Albany County, if there's twenty-four seven, if there's an issue in our building, they automatically have access to every fob door in our district. Um, along with having keys, along with having knock boxes, this is another level of protection that we're adding in. Because again, minutes, seconds are important. This is a way to be able to help access. And the fact that we made it a little bit harder and we hardened our exterior, you want to be able to offer this. Um, on top of this, last Friday, it's kind of funny that this happened, um, we were awarded a twenty-twenty-three, I'm gonna share it real quick. Because I just got this on Friday, so I was having a bad day and I saw this and kind of made me a little happy. Um, Utica National, we've received this basically five years in a row. Um, it's recognition of the school's outstanding efforts to create a safer school environment prescribed by the safety group members, um, and their principals that they adhere to. So we've received that from Utica National and a five-hundred-dollar check as well. By the way, um, last week we performed physical vulnerability tests to our network. So as I was talking about our cyber issues, you know, as we harden our exteriors, we're also hardening our interiors. Um, NAREC came in, they checked for physical vulnerabilities, they ran a whole bunch of tests, basically to see who can get in. So we have all of these different things that I truly don't understand, but I know that we're doing the things that we need to to be able to safeguard the data that we have in our district. Um, and prevention, as you know, we just got the Office of Mental Health grant to implement second step. And we also have approval for the secured vestibules off in the middle school and high school. Um, the high school, the middle school is actually gonna get done in the summer. High school, we actually were awarded the Smart Schools Safe Bond, so that, we had to redo that, as you know, a couple months ago. We put it in, we got it, it's over a hundred thousand dollars, so that's part of that funding. The next thing is SED. We're going back to them and now we're putting in our vestibule drawings to go through for the high school. So we're trying to harden that exterior as quick as we possibly can. As you know, it takes time. But, you know, if we're getting things done in a year, that's actually light speed when it comes to building projects. Um. So these are just some of the items. It doesn't take away from the issues and concerns that are going on. But I just want to put the light that we are trying. These aren't perfect. We're not perfect. I don't think you can be perfect. Because if you study and look at each case and each scenario, they're different, and one thing that went right in one district went wrong in another. Um, human error becomes one of the biggest issues. If you look at Evolvy and other places, you can see this, there was error. So training and continuing going through what our practices are is extremely important because we can't let our guards down. And I, and I don't think we are, safety is something that we continue to push forward, and I just kind of want to share a little bit of that tonight, given the scenarios and things that have been happening. Any questions on that?
Frank, on the, um, cyber front, do we have or does NAREC have the ability to do test phishing emails?
Yes.
Will be doing that?
I believe they do, but I believe we're gonna be doing more of that as well. Um, NAREC, we're very lucky to be a part of NAREC because they stem from up to Canada all the way down. So they're a large region, so our resources aren't just us any longer. They're, you know, we have the resources of a larger group that can help say, go.
On, on that front too, just as far as phishing, I can tell you from personal experience that my company, we're seeing it, um, through multi-channel. It's not just, um, email. It could be like a chat function through like a Google Chat or phone. It's coming from.
Didn't see that yet.
Lots of different channels.
I know they're getting very sophisticated because the emails are looking like I'm sending them or, and then also sending them. They're very sophisticated.
Like, it, it could look like an email to Jim saying, can you send me the latest payroll, right, or the, right, and then you send it thinking it's Jim.
Yeah.
And it's a bad actor who's gonna use that to create accounts and do all kinds of other things. Um, you mentioned reunification, but you don't have to get into the details. We wouldn't talk about that. But do we have a reunification plan as part of our safety program?
So we, well, Trish is on our safety committee, so she, she knows this. Um, we have a plan. It's not very good. Um, so I, I will be very clear on that. And what I mean by not very good is there, we can get students from point A to point B. It's all the other stuff that goes on after that that becomes very difficult. So you have to manage not only the situation, but you have to manage people, right, and you have to manage everything that's happening. And that's something we're not currently doing well because we haven't really had to. So we're really looking at our reunification plan and how to get her make that work. Um, we will be doing a lot of practicing going forward. One of the things that we're talking about is everything's a reunification. So if our fire drills happen, we can't just say, all right, they go in. No, that's a reunification. So how do we use those events to be able to pass our processes? And that's a change of mindset that we haven't really done yet, so we're getting to those points of trying to get there. Um, but no, I was ready, you know, I'm gonna be very honest. Um, we definitely can do work on our reunification. That's why we're doing it.
All right.
And I Love You Guys has really built programs for that.
Okay, good, all right. Glad to hear you're working on this.
Frank, I don't fully understand what you, you said reunification?
Reunification, so.
Reunification.
Anytime students go out, they have to go to meeting places. There's different levels of those meeting places. It could be on campus, off campus. Those types of things have programs and procedures that go in place.
And that's called a reunification plan?
Correct.
Okay, I got it.
Right, so if there was a reason why kids couldn't come back into a building and we needed to connect them to trusted adults, right, how would you do that?
And then, you know, one of the things that we just looked at in general, Mr. Vbenzy and I, we went to, uh, training with the sheriffs, Mr. Vbenzy and Mrs. DeKay and myself. And I Love You Guys came in and actually trained us all. And one of the things that we talked about was the staff that we currently have to set up our reunification areas won't be able to do so. So it won't be the elementary school staff setting up the reunification. If the elementary school staff is in lockdown or the ones that have to be relocated, it will be high school staff or maintenance staff or, or other people and vice versa. If the high school or middle school has to move, that's the elementary school. I know that sounds very silly and very simple after you do it, but that was never something we discussed up until that point in time going. That was an aha moment for us. So we're looking at creating these boxes that have all the information and things in it. So we really are trying to make sure that, God forbid, we ever have to use these things. We have these tools that are ready to go.
Sorry you have to spend so much time talking about school safety and worried about this. It's, it's a horrible thing that we're dealing with these days.
And honestly, I've been.
Doing what you're doing.
I've been dealing with school safety for the twenty years that I've been an educator, I'm an administrator, and school safety is paramount to have students learn and staff be safe and comfortable in their buildings. And, you know, like I said, it's not perfect. Um, there's no perfect answer for this. It's just continual analysis and looking at what we can do. So I have a couple more things. Um, today, Jessica and I were preparing for the meeting, and this is something I want to talk to the board about. Is when we have meetings, we create all these documents and we do all these agendas and we print all this paper. I think there might be a better way, if we want to try doing something a little different, of using QR. I think there might be a better way, if we want to try doing something a little different, of using QR codes. So a lot of people have devices, we could set up a QR code, they could log on, they could click on it and they could get all the resources, they could get the agenda, they could have that information. And then if they still want paper copies, we could have some paper copies available. But we're, you know, reams and reams of paper are being utilized at each board meeting to go through that. There might be better ways to do this. And before I made any changes or Jessica and I kind of looked and explored this further, I kind of want to know what the board felt about this.
I am for it. Um, I'm glad to have had the presentation that we had earlier for Madison, um, improvements. And I was also glad to not receive a colorful printed copy that I then had to take home and decide if I was going to save it for five years and then eventually recycle it. So, um, I know we have members of the audience who might prefer paper copies, so if there are some available, that would be great. Um, but I think it's, it's great to take use of technology to reduce our, our use of trees.
Yeah, we kind of, we realized it today and it was a thing, this is, what are we doing here? Is this the right way to be doing this? So we can start exploring that and seeing how it works.
Yeah. Why do I need a QR code if I just have it online?
Well, it's easier, it's quicker, right? Because sometimes you'd have to log on, you go to the website, you go to these, a QR code, literally you take a picture, you do it and boop, it's right there. Can't believe I just used
It's just oblique, but it's, it's just opening it up on my computer.
It's the same idea. But it's just, it's an ease thing to do. Um, and it, it just makes things a lot easier for people as they're coming in to use a QR code.
I think you could include in the announcement for the meeting if someone would be in attendance and like a paper copy of the agenda. Send an email to Jess, sorry Jess.
No, but that's a good idea. Yeah, so getting green might be a nice way to move forward a little bit, so as it rips through my paper, I apologize for that. Um, okay, planning for the capital project, again, I do apologize, but I have a lot to go over. Um, so as you know, we're moving forward with the phases of elementary capital project, there's a lot of planning to do. Um, but we've been meeting with multiple stakeholders and a lot of our rooms have been signed off on finally. So, you know, I think we have teachers, staff that utilize it, we have curious staff, and we're finally getting to a point where we have an semblance of what a room is going to look like. There's still a few things that are, um, we haven't done any site work really yet. Um, so a lot of that kind of stuff still needs to be done. But at least we've been able to get the part of it out to the evaluators and estimators. So I'm still waiting on that to come back, but we should have a good estimation of where we are, a week or two. So that will really help us say, are we crazy? Do we have too much, too less, what can we add, what can we take away? When the estimation comes back. One of the things that's not approved yet, oh, and I wanted to say this, we have several staff and a lot of input, but I wanted to actually cite the staff member here, Stacy Vitelli. Um, I've never seen anything quite like it, her architectural designs and her ability to develop a room was, it was better than our architect. I gotta tell you, it was very impressive and, um, very helpful in that. So I just wanted to kind of share a shout out to her. Um, but one outstanding issue that we have is in our music room. You know our cafeteria, it currently is one level and then we have another level. We have to do some destructive testing, now that sounds scary, but we have to figure out what's underneath that area. So above the area to raise the ceiling, I love this, there's actually two ceilings. So there's the removable ceiling and then they have ductwork that they put in right underneath another ceiling. So we believe we can remove both of those ceilings and increase that space, but there'll be a lot of soft work and some other back work. The other issue that we really want to do is we want to lower that down, so we, you know, we don't want people with ceilings in their classroom. We want it to be a wide breadth room. So we have to see what's underneath there. We do know that there is a couple of things that we can move, we think, but we're going to have to dig some holes and, and then break into the building and go underneath the wood. So fair warning, we're trying to figure that out. Um, people really don't want to take that on because it's destructive and they don't want to be responsible for it. So we're working with our construction manager to find a company that's willing to do this for us. But we can't really design a project without knowing what's in it.
There's asbestos in the tiles.
Oh, there's asbestos everywhere. The building was 1940, 19, anyway, so, you know, that's an old building. We have to know that there's different types of asbestos and not, again, like I did with the Capitol Project last time, I'll go over the two different types and all those different things. And again, we're going to be extremely careful all across the board, you know. Again, like I said, I'm a father of four and a caretaker of thousands. It's, you know, we're not going to put anyone in danger. Um, so with that, we recently met the NYSERD to explore some grants as well to move forward with the mandate of electric busing. Um, so one thing that we are going to actually apply for is called the Clean Transportation Studies Flex Program. This study asserts with a wide range of purposes and it actually, they pay for 75% of the study. This study will actually help us down the road. Um, it will assess the electrical infrastructure and upgrades and charging equipment needed to accommodate a fleet of zero emission buses. So as we're developing this project, we'll have that ammunition as we move forward. It will assess the potential costs associated with transitioning to zero emission buses. So again, we don't have that, right? It's all speculation, NYSERD will work with us and be able to help us do that. And it will assess the potential scheduling or logistical challenges that may need to be resolved when transitioned. So it's not just jumping in and then after that assessing the type of zero emission. After we have all of that, that information, then we can look at grants. But that's the next thing I wanted to say. Last one, and this is probably the big one, the transportation study came back that we did recently over against back the building. Um, I've shared the information with both the town and the regional department of transportation planning. So I'm working with a regional officer, they're going through those recommendations that are in there and then they will be working with the district, probably try to make us pay for it, being honest. Um, it's part of the project. So we're going to have to, there's going to be a lot of conversations going on before. I am not going to get into detail of the 68-page, um, essay right now and information that was received. We can do that in facilities, so I broke this down into very simple things to understand. So GTS Consulting performed an in-depth traffic study of Martin Road and the new facility. Here's what we have. The additional traffic generated by the proposed bus garage will have no notable or significant impact on traffic operations on Martin Road or at the New Salem Road intersection. So no notable or significant impact again. The study has in-depth traffic patterns and all this information. Uh, there were adequate gaps in traffic to accommodate turning movements into and out of the garage, good set of lines for safe access, no capacity concerns. The existing pavement width on Martin Road is more than adequate to accommodate the bus traffic and the additional traffic is not to have any significant impacts on existing pavement conditions. So that kind of worry that was going on, our study has shown that there's not an issue. We did have an issue though. Um, one issue is that we have to address is that the southern radius at Martin Road and New Salem Road, that intersection should be expanded to accommodate bus turning right onto New Salem Road without impacting northbound through traffic. So that is an area that I am working with Regional DOT on now to be able to address as we move forward. So grand scope of things, not a bad, um, result. Kind of knew that there would probably be an issue in that area, except from the very beginning. So now we have the ammunition we need to be able to help forward that. Um, and that ends my conversation. Thank you. Any questions coming up?
No traffic.
No traffic.
Thank you for the presentation and congratulations to you and the district on the award. Um, great to continue to see that. For that, we're going to move more to the business portion of the meeting uh, with the approval of Minet, which, thank you Jess for confirming that there. Would anyone like to move to?
I would move to a different minute.
Second?
My second.
All in favor? Okay, we have action items of the treasurer report, if you'd like to just do all those at once, please. Um, all in favor, or anyone like to move it, sorry.
All of us.
Uh, second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That, uh, we're going to move to the personnel items and we have, uh, a number of retirements which are totaling more than a century of time here for which we thank, um, Mary Kirsten and Adina Parker and Paula Riley and Kim Becker and Linda McCutcheon for their dedication and contributions to this district. Made it better for being here and we really wish you all the best in your next enjoyable phase of life. Um, thank you so very much, assuming we approve your retirement. Um, but
Yeah, I, thank you Rachel. Um, I just want to say with all the retirements, not only tonight, but everyone, the impact and loss of these individuals on the district will be felt. Um, they've all been here a majority of years, they've all put in time and effort to be able to shape our students and children. And, you know, without them, the district would not be where it is. Districts are cyclical and we build on foundations, right? So the foundation of the great people before us, we for a good foundation for the future and these individuals who are retiring tonight and, and have already been retired, really do example, um, set the example for that. I do want to state, um, that, you know, I told Paul Riley I wouldn't say anything, so I have to officially say that I will miss Paul Riley in October, but I told him he said not to say a word, so I have to, so there you go.
Thank you for not saying anything about Paul Riley. And yes, we do really appreciate all of this, thank you. Um, but first we need to, if someone needs to move it, anyone?
All of us.
Anyone to second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations on your retirement. And to the district. Okay, so that takes us to the end of 5.2.24 um, to 5.3, we'll move, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5. Um, I want to ask a quick question about 5.6, are we approving both field trips?
Yes, Mrs. DeGue put both on as an option. Um, these are weekend field trips and not take away from the instructional time, given the timeframe that they were given. I asked Mrs. DeGue about it today. So either one of these may go on, she just wants to be able to have the ability to be able to work with them and talk through the board. Um, or not during the instructional day.
This is my 10th grade field trip, just
Yes.
It's a good question.
Yeah, they have specific steps, they're still working through that with their advisor of students. Be able to sense the timeframes coming up already.
We, okay, we'll work with that and then we'll go Well, anyone like to move? My second? Jessica, all in favor? Thank you very much. We have an audit committee today.
Thank you. Trying to remember some of it as well, I apologize.
Did you have that software included, like the scheduling?
Uh, yeah, we did, thank you. We did, we talked about the new scheduling, so Master Library is something that we're with, um, we have, Neil worked with Shawna on this and they did some program looking at this and Master Library will allow us to be able to have a forward-facing facilities program where we can go online. People can look at it, be able to book it right there, do everything through our online system. And if something's booked, they'll actually be able to say, nope, can't get it right now and they'll be able to take care of that. On top of this, we can also, we're moving from our school dude system to Master Library as well. So that will house everything, so let's say a use, facilities use comes in and we need to have tables set up, it will automatically send out to our facilities, create a work order for that to get done simultaneously. So taking away the human error, taking away the human component and really being able to streamline our facilities program. And Jess, I like, thank you.
I do have more actually. Um, that radon testing will be done within the next month. Um, obviously anything that reads high will need to get reassessed.
So this is the reassessment. Um, so we've done radon testing twice, we had an inconclusive, so now we're doing the long-term radon testing. Um, we had to wait until spring, this is when they wanted us to be able to do it. Um, so we are now doing it again at the same location that we discussed the past two years. And, um, you know, if there's a mitigation aspect that needs to happen, again, they're very low numbers, um, but if it needs to happen, we'll address those areas. The first time was above, the second time was under, so
He said he wanted to make sure he did them during the heating and cooling seasons.
Yeah.
Um, the lead and the water, he said, all drinking and kitchen waters were five, ours is brilliant. Um, he left a leak in the hallway by the cafeteria and I'm going to the gym. Maybe that'll get fixed, he's really hopeful.
And he's hopeful about the elementary school as well, we're just waiting to get on the roof and he's working through those. He did do something pretty interesting, there are plastic ceiling tiles now that go on to actually catch the water, so we don't have a perpetual bucket, um, anymore in our hallways, so that's kind of good. I do want to talk about the lead real quick, if you wouldn't mind, Robin. Um, the lead testing actually changed and I don't want to say the parts of the billion that it is, but they changed the lead requirements to even a more restrictive component and we're already there. So we've already done the work in the district over the past couple of years to make sure that we're there. Last time we had lead testing, we, we made sure that we were, we were making the changes already. Um, but we're going to continue to move forward.
And the only other item I have is the doors that had been previously ordered that when they arrive, they will be ready to be installed.
They're installed.
Great. That's it.
Well done.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for this. Uh, the policy meeting is about two hours long, so I'm actually prepared for this one, sorry about that.
You're sorry about that?
No, sorry that it wasn't. Alright, so for policy, yes, all the policy meetings are recorded. If anyone's very interested, it's kind of hard to give a recap, it's a pretty long meeting, but please help yourself and if you have any interest in learning more around here. Um, we have three policies up for vote by the board tonight that you'll see a little bit later in our agenda. Um, we have policy 2245, executive student member of the Board of Education. Natalia helped us revise this a little bit. Uh, basically, we opened up the eligibility just slightly so that there's a bigger pool of students that would be eligible and hopefully some would be interested. We kept the process pretty much the same with how the decision is made who to suggest to the board. Um, we basically just added National Honor Society, King Club and Student Council because it was really down to only like one or two kids and if they weren't interested, then we definitely have a pool. Right, Natalia, is that pretty much what we decided?
Yes.
Um, and Frank has a process where he's hoping to appoint in May so that it'd be a little crossover with the new student and Talia.
I was told today that it's still in my track.
Okay, great, so that's the change you'll see in that policy. Um, we also have policy 5151, homeless students on the agenda. We also have policy 5151, homeless students on the agenda. We actually started this one with using the NISBA recommended policy, which was very different than the Boysville policy. Ours was pretty outdated. We didn't really change it much from the NISBA. So, that's up for vote tonight. And then 4531 field trips is up for vote tonight. And we actually kind of did a combination of our existing policy with the NISBA recommended. NISBA had a lot more information than ours did with areas like transportation, required medications. I think those are the two major things that we added. So those are the three up for vote tonight. We have a lot of work to get done before June. So hopefully we'll be really speedy in our next few meetings. We keep talking about the sports and extracurricular activities. We're creating a new policy called 5205 that's going to combine a bunch of different policies and the athletic code that we currently have. We got a little bug done at our last meeting talking about athletic code violations, what is a violation? What would punishment be for said violations, if any? And then we decided to step back a little bit and invite some administration into our meeting to make sure not, we want to make sure we understand all perspectives and needs and not just look at it through our own lens. So that will be at our next meeting in, I think, April 18. They're coming to help us. But if anyone's interested in that discussion, it took us a long time, and we really didn't get very far, but please watch the recording. Also in that discussion is 5281, which is eligibility for sports. And also hopefully the administration can talk to us a little bit about what they, it would help them and what they're trying to do for our students. We also talked a while about 1500, which is the public use of school facilities. We kind of talked about it a little bit already tonight. We're getting really an increase, because of the growth in our area, an increased request to use our fields. And it's getting to where we're almost having to pick and choose who gets to get what. So we're going to try and look at it from a policy standpoint and have a standard deadline where everyone that wants to use the fields has to get in their requests at the same time so we can evaluate them together and try to come up with an equitable way to let everyone have some use of the fields. I think that's where we're going with it, right? And then we also, with that, want to discuss the fee schedule and make sure we're charging appropriate fees and not costing the taxpayers money to align fields for other groups. We touched on policy 4710, grading systems. Our policy, our current Boysville policy, the particular section about changing grades is much different than NISBA's. So Frank is reviewing that and putting together a suggested draft, and we'll discuss that at the next meeting, adding it to the list.
Read that to the list.
We do have two policy meetings before the next board meeting now. So we have April 18th and May 3rd. We also started looking at our graduation policies, and really, we don't have a policy 4772, which is actually required. So we're going to pull that together. We have the NISBA's recommended one. It doesn't look like anything too difficult, so we'll put that in there. And lastly, we have a huge shuffle work to do with the Code of Conduct, which, you know, we review annually, every year, required. And we're especially talking about 5300, which is student searches and interrogations. We're trying to kind of look at our current policy versus NISBA's versus some other school districts and try and kind of combine and come up with what we think is best for our district. Also, we're really looking at the student harassment and bullying sections, which are 0115 in the regulations and exhibits, and also people opportunity and non-discriminatory, 0100 section. I'm sure there's other sections too in the code. But that's what's on our plate right now. And we do have a big list of future things, but we'll wait till we get to those. I think that's it. Anyone else on policy or on the board that has anything to add?
If you're not on the policy committee, you're missing out.
I wish. I would invite anyone on the board to always send me their suggestions that they want to possibly look at, but especially if you have the time to look at our discussion on the sports part to make sure everyone kind of knows the discussion and send me any input if you have. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Policy Committee, for your incredible work on this, this, uh, Herculean task. With that, we move to another Herculean task, which is the budget. We are going to approve the vote on the approval of the budget for the upcoming year. This is the amount that Jim has shared with us multiple times. And so we're going to move to item 7.1. Is there anyone who'd like to move it?
Don't move.
Who's moving it, seconding?
Second.
Or just second? And on? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone? Okay, thank you very much. And now we'll go with item 7.2, the property tax report card. Anyone like to move that?
I'll move it.
Okay, thanks, Archie. Any seconds, take a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And policy 2245, any questions about the three policies? All right, let's take those three together, 7.3, 4, and 5. Anyone want to move them forward?
Some.
Anyone seconding?
I'll second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 7.6, the Northeastern IP Tax Cert Settlement.
I think we need to
Yeah, do we have? Yeah, can we table it at least until we see the next draft? Because there were some errors.
Yeah, I mean, again, this happened to us today, so.
That was the one, thank you. We're going to, yep, well, we're going to wait on this. Thank you. And now we move to the opportunity, we're at 8.1, the opportunity for the public to be heard. This is the second opportunity for the public to be heard during this meeting. Anyone would like to come up, podium? Or welcome to do so at this time. With that, we have 8.2, the opportunity for the board to be heard. I'll just say thanks to you for pulling the budget together and making sure it's easy to understand. Thank you, Jim. And with that, the dates to remember, board petitions are due the 17th. We have a BOSI's budget meeting on the 19th at 7:30. And and then we have our next regular board member, regular board meeting is on the 8th of May. And about a week or so later, week or two days later, is the budget vote. Last vote before that, so. Thank you very much. And with that, is there anyone who'd like to move to adjourn?
Yeah, I'd go in as a good one.
To adjourn, to executive?
I'll move it.
Anyone to second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you all. We will be going to executive. We can come back.